If you'd like to be a delegation at city council, it's a very simple form. You go online and fill it out. Let us know that you're, let us know ahead of time that you're coming. When we do have evening delegation or evening sessions, there is an evening opportunity. However, today we don't, so there's only the afternoon opportunity. There are many people who let us know ahead of time that they wish to come to speak to council. However, first in the queue, I'll ask the Masco Medical Center group to come up. Once you're situated, the microphones are currently on. Introduce yourself, take about five minutes to address council, and then I'll offer council an opportunity for any questions that they may have. Welcome, gentlemen, and as I said, once you're set up, please introduce yourselves. Okay.
Can you hear me?
I can, and thank you for that. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you very much for taking the time today to meet with us. We just felt it'd been some time since we'd last met, and we just wanted to give you an update where we're at and how things are going.
Perfect, and just before you move far into it, just for those who might be watching online, if you could introduce yourselves, please.
Okay. Kendra, I'm chairman of the board for the Masco Medical Center.
Brent Hoyseth, treasurer for the Masco Medical Center.
Welcome.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we'd like to just get started here. I see you got quite a few people in today, so we won't hold it up. These are some pictures that were taken about three weeks ago, month ago approximately, while we started our, did our parkade removal of dirt. We placed it to the west so that the Rotary House or Kensergeon House can use that material to bring up their site to the right elevation. And then we start did some shoring on the one side because we're encroaching on some utility corridors, and then we started doing the piling. We finished our piling on Saturday. There was roughly 160 drill points, about average of 25 feet deep, and most of them in the larger beam, heavier weight area required to bale at the bottom. So those are completed pretty well all by local trades. Where we're at today, as you know, design's completed. We have our land agreement in place, University of Alberta long-term agreement. It's pretty well in place. There are just some short keynote items there that Rhonda's working on with, with the government. The rate's pretty well been sent and set and the term. Just some, they want us to do is the tenant improvements, so we're going back and forth on that a bit and trying to see where that'll land. Building contractors, Clark Builders, as you know, is the builder, and we've kept that 70% plus in trades. We just had a recent thing occur where we switched out an out-of-town or trade for a local, so that'll keep our numbers up. Our budget is still targeting on, on 35.7 million to complete, although our schedule has slipped somewhat. Not really any fault of anyone in this room here. I'd like to take my hat off to your engineering group mayor. They did a phenomenal job for us this spring. And also, we ran into an issue on site where we started to encroach on a live cable to the hospital, and they quickly worked with us to move the building roughly 600 millimeters, so we weren't in that space, and waited for the paperwork to get done but didn't hold up construction. So Clark has had a clear path right from day one, and currently they're about three weeks behind and to no fault of ours. The fourth floor addition, we'll talk to that in a minute. Facility tenants, like I said, the first floor is very close to getting signed off. The second floor with the daycare, the restaurant, the pharmaceutical and medical supply, we're down to probably about two proponents for each of them. But we're, especially in daycare and restaurant, we're being very diligent in that due to the impact to those user groups, that'd be especially the hospital staff or the NWP students. We want to make sure it's the right operator for those. We've had two really strong proponents for the pharmacy and medical supply. You'd know them both very well, and so we'll land on one of those probably within the next month or so. Groundbreaking, we did, as you know, that's why I brought the shovel. Construction commenced in June. They were a little late out of the gate. That's part of the three-week delay. And so far, we're pushing towards the 17 million in funds raised, and we're pushing our campaign to kick off in September. We've had an excellent group working with us in Calgary that are lining up a bunch of the VPs and CEOs of the major stakeholders of the region. In fact, they were stakeholders at one time themselves till they retired, so we've got some good contacts down there. And the rest of our board is getting ready to take on different aspects of fundraising in this fall. Provincial funding, we've got proposals in front of the Alberta Treasury and Finance Group and the Minister, and I most recently met with Ron Weeb to discuss it further and trying to get a meeting with Minister Lagrange to make sure she moves that forward. Our indigenous consultations are ongoing, and I think you've seen at our groundbreaking ceremony that we're engaged with them fairly, fairly well in the region. The next one, this is our fourth floor. Most recently, about, I'd say, a month and a half ago, we had a, an interested group of physiotherapists approach us at one of our board meetings and wanting to know if they could get space in our building. And of course, the three floors are, are taken up, and we've always built that building to be able to handle a fourth floor. So it's, they brought a very interesting aspect to the, the meeting. It's not just standard physiotherapy. It's to help out with accident victims, trauma, to get back to recovery to a more normal life, similar to the Glen Rose Center in Edmonton, some of the Ackermans from there. And one of the supporters of it is the Dodds family in Grand Prairie. So that's what we're looking at with that. They're doing some further research with it, and the University of Alberta approached them to maybe do some physiotherapy, graduate and training here if we had a facility like this. And they most recently met on August 14th, I think it was, over at the NWP. The next one is our funding and community partners. As you can see, we've expanded it quite a bit here over the summer. Once we, they knew we got shovel in the ground, a lot of municipalities and towns and villages have pitched in and helped out, some in small amounts, but most of them have said they're going to try and do it continually for the next few years to, to help get this facility paid for. And they realize the importance of it to help get family physicians out into their communities. So that's basically our, our update, and, and just wanted to keep you in, in where we're at every month. And also, we're planning on getting our funding partners together every three, four months and bringing on a schedule and a finance update. And we can do it virtually if everybody wants.
Appreciate that, and I see no one in the queue, so I'll jump in with one question, and then it may open up other ones from my colleagues. How is fundraising going to date?
Good, yeah, I think, good. You know, like everyone agreed, we had to get shovel in the ground to get interest. We've had families stop in and drop off a $10,000 check. A couple from Cague River did the same, a farm family. So it's starting to really reach out there. Social media, Jesse's not here. I don't have the numbers, but it's really gone up in visiting numbers, so.
And, and the ask to the provincial government is still $15 million?
15 million, yeah.
Okay. Look to my colleagues, any other questions? Seeing none, thanks for being here today. We appreciate the work you're doing.
Okay, thank you.
And we look forward to your next update.
Okay, thank you very much.
Next on our agenda today, item 6.2, the Bear Creek Village Condo Association. Once our friends from Masco have had a chance to pack up, I'd ask that the, Mr. Edward Bud Peterson, please come forward to the table. Once you're set up, sir, the microphone is on. Just introduce yourself for those who are watching from online. Take five minutes to address council. They may have questions for you following your presentation. Welcome.
Bud Peterson will suffice versus Edward Bud. I guess, thank you for giving us the time to make a little presentation to maybe bring this back into the forefront for you guys, because it's really in the forefront for us. And it is the maintenance of grass cutting and tree trimming and such in Bear Creek Valley along the creek bank, because we are placed between 68th Avenue and 100th Street on the corner. And when we first built the facility, there was an agreement between, there was a lot of issues with that, but there was an agreement between the city and, and us in that they would maintain the, cutting the grass and stuff in that open spot down below, and we would refrain from pushing snow over the bank. We've lived up to our part of the deal. We have not moved any snow. In fact, we haul snow away. But probably three years ago, maybe two years ago, the maintenance of the bank has stopped. So in today's dry world that we live in, fire has become an increasing hazard. We've had reports, FireSmart was in, did some, some stuff. I'll just read you what they said about it. "The property has effectively incorporated numerous, numerous Fire Start principles to bolster its wildfire resilience. The immediate zone is meticulously maintained, free of combustible materials, and provides a robust defensible space. In the intermediate zone, a single deciduous tree is surrounded by bark mulch, which should be replaced with non-flammable material to further reduce fire risk." The extended, this is the part that's important for you guys. "The extended zone includes city-owned property in Grand Prairie with a large accumulation of grass on a slope posing a significant grass fire hazard, particularly in the spring and fall, which requires regular mowing to align with FireSmart principles and mitigate potential wildfire threats." So that's the part that's most important to us. We've had a couple of fires, thankfully for us, but on the other side of the, the creek bank that the fire department had to come and put out, and the fire department reacted very quickly. So that was kept under control. So I guess that's the bottom line. We, we want to see that maintenance. It's a matter of cutting the grass, really, and trimming some trees. That's basically it.
Okay, well, thank you for your presentation. I'll open up to my colleagues. And then, following the meeting towards the end, we have a portion for delegates for council to ask administration questions and potentially some, there may be business arising from that. I'll open it up to council, and I do have Councilor Thiessen in the queue, but please stick around if you'd like to. Otherwise, when the conversation goes between council and administration, if there's anything that comes out of that, someone will follow up with you based on that conversation. And of course, if you'd like to watch the conversation, they're always recorded on YouTube, and you can go back and watch that. But we encourage people to stick around, so if you have nowhere else to be, it's always a fun afternoon to spend, fun way to spend your afternoon. So thank you for being here today, and I'll open it up to council for questions. Councilor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I got a few questions, but I'll, I'll just ask one for now and then see what generates from our other council members. In your form, you intimated that we had, and here, you intimated that we had an agreement between the condo association and the city of Grand Prairie to take care of the lawn and stuff like that. Now, part of what you'd like as this is to put the, have the past policy reinstated. When was that policy pulled for that agreement?
1996, 97.
Okay, so the city hasn't been mowing the lawn since 1990?
No, no, the city, city was mowing the lawn up until about three years ago, 2020, 2021.
Now, did we?
Probably a COVID area.
Yeah, did, so was there, so that agreement was in place for that time? Did we state why we're not mowing anymore, or?
No, I, I did come to the city and question, and basically I was told that the engineering department had decided that it would go, it was going to go back to wild.
Okay, yeah, no, I get that. All right, yeah, I got other questions, but I'm going to digest that for now and see what the rest of council comes up with. Thank you.
Also, Tool.
Yeah, you talked about possible fires down there. You mentioned there was a couple fires. Do you know if they were from people that were maybe camped down out there or passing cigarette, or you, you don't know? But was there any camping out there that you're aware of?
There, there's been various causes for fire. Those fires that have been in the last year and or so have been basically smokers throwing their cigarettes off when they're on the walking paths. But in the past, Lauren Wheeler, the vice president, lives in Phase One right near the bank, and we have on occasion, a couple of occasions, caught people down there building a campfire so they could do their, whatever they do privately.
Just one more question, if you don't mind. We've got the GPPS and the RCMP. Do you see them patrolling down there at all?
Well, they, they don't patrol in the areas, because it's pretty rough country. It's like not cleaned up. It's like wild bush down there, except for the grass area. It's probably four or five-foot tall, tall grass. But I have to say that in the incidents where we actually caught these people and had places where they were setting up a camp, but we saw them before they could get it set up properly to their way they wanted it, city services and RCMP responded quickly, effectively. There was just no issues with that at all. They were really very, quite good.
Thank you for that comment. I have no more questions.
All right. Councilor Thiessen, there's no one else in the queue if you have anything else.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I appreciate that. Does, does the condo association have the ability to cut the grass? I know that that's not being intimated here, but.
Well, that all comes at a cost these days. We already pay our taxes but get really no tax service. We maintain our own streets. We, we pay for our own garbage. We do our own snow removal. We already do all of that at our cost. So could we get somebody to do it? I'm sure we could, but we would have to pay for it. Probably more efficient if the city looks after it.
So in, in regards to, I guess where you're intimating is the city's response is probably regarding naturalization and letting the grass grow long and stuff. That was a pilot project that I think is, we're going to review here fairly shortly. Can you read that FireSmart evaluation of the lands that are, are most at jeopardy of starting a fire again, please?
Well, they're all at jeopardy, but the one that's important in the statement is, "The extended zone includes city-owned property in Grand Prairie with a large accumulation of grass on a slope posing a significant grass fire hazard, particularly in the spring and fall, which requires regular mowing to align with FireSmart principles and mitigate potential wildfire threats." Now, this inspector that was out there stated to us that he was going to send a report to the city. So, but I, I don't know if he did or didn't, but whatever, so.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think I got what I need. Thank you very much, sir, for reading that, and thanks for coming in today to address this concern.
Okay.
Thanks for being here, Mr. Peterson. As I mentioned, please stick around if you'd like to. All right, now moving on to our agenda, item 6.3 through 6.8. I understand you're all here in regards to concerns with the Margaret Edson Manor. As you've each filled out individual forms, you will be each given the time to speak. If, if May, if you'd like to go first, May Enrikes, because you're in the agenda first. Following that, if any of you wish to not speak because what you came to share was already addressed, please just let me know when I call your hand up. But if you have something new to add, please feel free to come up and do that. First, we're going to start. My apologies, I jumped through the agenda. We are now on 6.3. Mamissa Robinson, please come forward. No, that's okay, thank you. Welcome. Once you get situated, your microphone is on, and then please introduce yourself for those who are watching from home. Take some time to address council, and we may have questions for you.
I'll be reading from my notes. I'm a little bit stressed.
And please just relax. It's not, no need to be stressed.
Okay.
Okay. Good afternoon, my name is Mamisa Robinson. Thank you for the great opportunity to speak to you about my project, WRT. I am requesting the council to grant the fire department the authorization to participate in a short educational film by WRT. On August 9, 2022, my son Elijah was assaulted by a boy older than him when he was at summer camp. Elijah didn't know that boy. He still doesn't know about that boy. All Elijah knew was that the boy was older than him. It took me several visits at the RCMP to have an investigation started. After month in December 2022, the investigation report stated that the boy who injured Elijah was under 12 years old. Therefore, nothing further will be done. While waiting for the investigation report, I contacted the summer camp manager because I wanted to speak to that boy's parent. The info wasn't released to me. I then authorized them to give my phone number to those people, but they never bothered contacting me. That boy caused serious injury to Elijah, my son. On August 9, 2022, at the emergency room here in Grand Prairie, they noted a dislocated wrist. So my son had a wrist completely at 90 degrees all the way back and a broken finger. They put a cast, actually, they put two different casts over two weeks. Then the referral came from the Children's Hospital in Edmonton. We had to go down there, thinking it was just for a check to see how the finger was going, but when we get there, it was different. The surgeon told us that we couldn't drive back to Grand Prairie because the x-ray showed that Elijah's finger was completely detached from the growing bone. So he was actually losing his finger. That couldn't be fixed with a cast. They scheduled an emergency surgery for the next morning. We had to be there at 6:00 AM in order for them to get Elijah ready for the operational room. That was back in 2022. Back today. WRT, W R T, stands for Who Is Responsible Then? As I said earlier, the RCMP couldn't help further because that boy's, and that boy's parent, they never contacted me. So who is responsible for all we went through because of what that boy did on August 9, 2022? WRT is a project dedicated to bring awareness about the importance of our choices and therefore the consequences. WRT, the Short Educational Film, will be the base for discussion to happen at schools, businesses, and all the venues in the city. The film is about an accident, so I need an ambulance, some sheriff, and a fire truck at the scene. The fire department chief at the resource road said that they need an authorization from the city council in order to have a truck out of the fire department. Therefore, I'm asking you to grant them that authorization, please. WRT empowers children today for great leaders tomorrow. So let's better our world one child at a time. Thank you for having me today.
Well, as I mentioned, thank you for being here, and I'll open it up to my colleagues for questions, recognizing Councilor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton, and thank you very much, Ms. Robinson, for coming in today. Really sorry to hear what happened to your son Elijah a few years back, and probably he's still dealing with some of that today. But I can see you're taking this and trying to make a positive outcome out of it, so I can, I can get behind that. So you mentioned the fire department coming and bringing a truck for video about an accident. Would they just be playing first responders in this video, or would they be interviewed? What's, what would the fire department's members attending this, what would their role be?
So they will be coming, and then it's going to be just short five-second scenes taken from an accident scene where we have to have the fire department coming and the police and the ambulance. So the truck will be just coming, and then a five-second shot when they're walking in the parking lot of the St. John ambulance, because I asked them already, they said they are in. I contacted the sheriff office, they are in as well. And then it was just the firefighter coming. So it's going to be like a five-second scene when they're coming in to kind of be around the scene like it's in real life.
Like a first responder, like they would normally be first on scene?
Yeah, so.
Okay. I don't, I don't have any issues with that. I think, I think it's a great idea. Food for thought for you, though. I've taken part in many math exercises, so Mothers Against Drinking and Driving. I also used to be one of the students against drinking and driving.
You took a picture with my son.
Yeah. And I know that they have, they work very closely with EMS, with our RCMP, soon to be GPPS, and with the fire department to run these types of like mock scenarios to help educate the kids about that kind of stuff. Depending on the outcome here, I'm just sort of giving you another, another avenue of which you could go down and maybe, maybe a conversation to be had with another local organization.
Awesome.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Russi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Well, first of all, I'm very sad about Elijah's experience, and thank you for working, not just for your son, but also for other people's kids, so really do appreciate that. I am curious, are you, have you incorporated a nonprofit society, or is this a for-profit endeavor, just?
So that's just the idea that came when nothing was being done. And one day, my son came to me in the room looking at his finger, who's like deformed forever. And he said, so nothing's going to be done, and nobody's responsible for that. And I was sad about it, and that's the idea that came from, in my, in my mind. And I, I've done nothing yet regarding being a nonprofit or thing like that. It's just my project so far. So I even was thinking about the closing with the logo and the name on it. So that was another idea, like when the kid's going to be watching this short movie, we're going to have discussion about the choices of what you're doing, there's consequences. So that boy was under 12. I totally understand that, but if he was 13, that would have been just worse for him and for his parents. So, so by going wearing this outfit that I had in mind, it's like making a statement. I'm going to be responsible. I'm going to be respectful. I'm going to be playing on the empathy, considering people around me, considering all the kids around me, respecting adults, even adults as well. Sometimes we showed a bad example as well, or we let the kids going the wrong path. So, but I didn't went that way yet. So it's like my own business, kind of, but that's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Blackmore.
I think my question was answered with the last comments. Thanks.
Councilor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. And again, sorry for Elijah going through that. How was he today?
So as Councilor Thiessen said, I tried to make it as cool as possible, because when that happened, we just moved in Grand Prairie in a hardship situation in the family. So he was really angry because he doesn't know, we don't know that boy. So it was like, okay, but why? He looked at his finger, he's like, okay, so I'm like Elijah, while we were waiting, I said, the RCMP is going to find him and things are going to be done. So I just told him, you know what? God wanted it to be like this. So I'm going to be fighting for you. You're going to get answer. You're going to know who did that to you, and we're going to go from there. So there's currently a case. I filed a case.
Okay. But Elijah's okay?
He's okay, his finger's just deformed for life because they had to open it.
Okay. So my one question is actually around filming. Do you have professional videographers that you're working with to create this? Just because I want to ensure that it's a professional setting, that it's well organized, put together, so that, again, in the end, it looks great, the meaning is great, but also the resources that we would be loaning essentially, you know, their time is not wasted.
Yeah, so the script, I wrote the script because that was the idea that I had. But there's a gentleman who goes to the Victory Church. He, he does videography, videograph stuff. So that's the person I'm going to approach. But I didn't want to approach him if I didn't know who's going to actually be there before sitting with him and discussing everything. So that's why I was like, okay, I want to have the yes from each three departments. Then I'm going to go approach him and say, okay, this is what I wrote. How are we going to go there? How, like the costs and the timing and everything? So it's not, like, if it, it has to start like by spring 2026. So, but I want it to be ahead of time, get the yes, and then bring him to the picture.
Yeah, and I guess for me, I want to support this, but I also want reassurances that it, that all the ducks are in row and that this will go smoothly.
Yeah.
Before we say yes to tying up city resources, especially emergency services.
Yeah, so that was my, my scare. If I talk to him first, saying, I have the script, we're going to have the sheriff, you're going to have, and then there's nothing happening. And he's going to look at me like, okay, but you said you're going to have this and going to have that. So that's why the last email I sent to the sheriff department, I said to him, I said, sheriff Darren, I need your yes, because I don't want to go and I don't have your yes. I'm still waiting. So he said to me, yeah, you have to go, so.
All right.
Where I'm at.
Thank you for coming in. Before I go to Councilor O'Connor, I'm just going to jump in the queue. So you've already been working with Grand Prairie Police Service? I don't know who the sheriff is in your.
Yeah, so I have Sheriff Darren. He said, because I said I needed two sheriffs on the scene, so Sheriff Darren Tibolt, he said he's going to be coming with Sheriff Wushinka. So the two of them, they're going to be coming. And about the ambulance side, that's Sarah Hill at the St. John ambulance. She said they are in, it's going to be doing, it's going to be filmed.
Sorry, who are the sheriffs? We don't have sheriffs. What department or what organization?
Oh, Sheriff Highway Patrol.
Okay, so that's the province's highway patrol. That's not the city of Grand Prairie's?
Oh, I have no idea.
That's why I'm just trying to piece it all together?
Yeah, I have no idea. Highway Patrol, Sheriff Darren.
Okay. So have you actually called the chief of the Grand Prairie Fire Department?
Yeah, so I went there with a note explaining, and then he had a lady call me back. And that's the lady, she said, the chief said, we need the council to say, get the truck out. We cannot leave the fire department just like this.
It's a little bit of an unusual process, so I'm trying to figure it out.
Yeah.
I think most, my other questions will be for administration. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I am, I'm very sorry to hear what your son has gone through. Recognizing Councilor O'Connor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. My question revolves around, do you have a director and a producer? Because the coordinate list to Councilor Berg's questions, it's to coordinate all that and someone to be able to work with your script and be able to see it film properly. So what is your main goal? What are you trying to nail down? And what's the message so that it comes across clearly?
Yeah, so the scene by itself, so there's an accident happening, and then at the end of the story, there's kind of nothing done because the person cannot be prosecuted. So now it's like, okay, you saw all this that happened. You saw how bad the story was. And at the end, nothing can be done because that's how the law is. So, but there's still something bad that happened. So you have to stop and think about the importance of what you're doing because something happened that caused the accident, that caused, well, I don't want to say all the story, but that caused what happened in the end. So because of that, it's like, look at what happened in this short film. It's so bad. It's so, it destroys several people. And then you can see it's just because of one single act that happened, and that single act could have been avoided. So it's, it's kind of the way the discussion's going to start around the film.
I'm sorry to hear about what's happened to your son. That's very sad. And I hope that you can go ahead and, and get a group of people that can help you produce this. And you're looking for permission for us to release resources for a fire truck?
Yes, that's what the chief said through the lady who called me. He said, he just want the city to say that, oh yeah, you can get the truck. And then after that, he's going to decide, because he's the chief, he's going to decide which.
Do you have a deadline and a date?
No, I do not have a deadline. As I said to Councilor Berg, I wanted to have the yes from the three departments before sitting down with this producer, because I wanted him to know like, okay, I did my homework. I did my part, now we can sit down and do the filming job. But by having the yes of all three departments. So I'm short of just one.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Thank you.
I see you have a document with you there. Did you want to, if you put it on that X on your table, you can show us some of the, perfect. So do you want to explain sort of what that is?
Yeah, so it comes like from the idea of the T-shirt that was saying every children matters. So I was like, okay, by purchasing those items and wearing it, it's like you're making a statement, like I'm, I'm responsible, I'm going to be respectful of the people around me, I'm going to be considering people around me, I'm not, I'm going to be aware of my choices and their consequences. So that's why I came up with the idea, and this one was done down here in Grand Prairie. And I had a chance to order actually one, one of them, and I have them to display and to show like, making a statement like, I'm wearing this, but what is behind that? Thank you.
Just before I let you go, can you remind me again what W I R T stands for?
W is who, H, W H O. I is for who is, R is responsible, and T at the end is for then, because my son, that's exactly what he said to me when he walked in my room, looking at his finger in December. After month, nothing was going on. I still don't know who did that. He looked, okay, who's responsible then for this? And that's stuck in my head. So W I R T, who is responsible then.
All right. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you very much for listening to me.
Now, as I mentioned earlier, I'm going to move on to item 6.4, but many of you are here for the same, with the same concern. So I'll call each person up. If you don't have anything in addition to add or anything new, and you want to forego your opportunity to speak to council, just let me know, give me a wave. But otherwise, I'll just go through the order as in the agenda, first recognizing Ms. May Enriquez. Please come forward, and the microphone is on. Once you're situated, please take your time to present to council.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Enriquez, initial M. I am a student of law at Dobco in Wheaton. I am here today not in my lawyer's capacity, but as a friend who would like to speak on behalf of my three clients, Emily Enriquez, Lily Beth Jella, and Marilyn Cardinal. To simplify, I'll address them on their first names as Emily, Lily, Marilyn. They're all tenants of Margaret Edson Manor, who were displaced by the unfortunate fire in June 9, 2025. They are all physically present and body of the council room today, council, and along with two more tenants, Harriet and Judy, who joined to listen in. Council, these are questions and concerns that we would like to address with the Grand Prairie Residential Society, as their landlord and the Grand Spirit Foundation, who manages this property. I would like to start by saying that all of these tenants have found alternate accommodations after the fire and have quite adjusted to their newly found homes. I will probably ask my questions one at a time, and council can provide me your answers if you have any, and instructions for follow-up. One question they would like to ask is in regards to the fire investigation. One question they would like to ask is in regards to the fire investigation. We would like to ask for confirmation if this has been concluded and if the landlord will be able to release this information to the tenants. How are we able to obtain this information and who will provide this to us? I'm not sure.
So I'm going to leave those questions for administration to the end of our session as in other presentations. So this is your time to present to council. Council may have questions for you. And then we'll take all the presentations from those of you who are here together, and we'll address those conversations.
Okay, mayor, thank you. Also, the tenants would like to ask if there are any subsidies or financial aid that can be provided to help out with their content removal. The landlord has provided a letter or announcement to the tenants telling them they are responsible for their content removal. The restoration companies has charged various amounts to these tenants, sum up to the amount of $18,000 per unit. Is there any potential regulation of these fees, council? Because these are vulnerable low-income people who cannot afford it. Also, one of the questions are, they would like to ask if there is a plan to rebuild the apartment, and if they are rebuilding it, will the landlord give the displaced tenants the first dibs to get back in? Or are they going to be putting in entirely new tenants in the apartment once it's rebuilt? And lastly, as there are fear mongering around, going around, these tenants here that if you make a stink out of this incident and you come forward with your concerns, your subsidy will be cut off and you won't be able to apply for assistance at the Grand Spirit Foundations. So they just wanted a confirmation that that is not happening. Those are all my questions, subject to your questions, council.
Thank you for your presentation. I'll open up to council for questions for the delegation. And as I mentioned, questions for administration will be at the end of the meeting. Council Pressy.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Well, first of all, heart certainly goes out to everybody who's been displaced. I can't imagine how traumatic that is. My mother went through, she lost everything in a fire about four years ago now and still dealing with it. And when it was fresh, it's fresh, and so heart really does go out. And thanks for, thanks for helping your friends, really do appreciate that. I, I am really struggling with this, because my heart really does go out. But we as a municipality, we, it's, wasn't, we didn't own, we didn't own the building, we didn't operate the building, we're not the level of government that regulates insurance, we're not the level of government that regulates landlord-tenant issues. And so I'm, I'm really struggling, because I think a lot of those questions we can't answer, because it's not our level of government. I'm just kind of trying to figure out, why, why council with this instead of an MLA or other bodies that are directly responsible? I'm trying to figure out why, why us?
Well, first off, if, when I, when I consulted with these clients, sir, they don't even know who to address their problems to. Like, they phone the Grand Spirit Foundation, and they're bounced back from one person to the other, saying, we don't have anything to do with that. And just for a basic example, like, asking the Grand Spirit Foundation, who do we talk to to coordinate the in and out of the restoration company to take our contents out? And we get the answer, we don't know, we don't have anything to do with that, you have to talk to your insurance adjuster. So they're all pitched to bounce around to different people.
So, and again, a lot of what you're talking about, so regulate insurance, regulating landlord tenants, even mandate that social services, housing, those are all in the provincial sphere. So have you reached out to MLAs to help figure out what's going on, or?
No, no, we have not taken that route, sir.
Yeah, well.
But we will.
And thank you again for helping out your friends. And I don't know how much we can help, but holy smokes, my heart sure go out to people.
Yeah, thank you.
Council Blackmore, you're good? Okay. Thanks for being here today, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I'll move on to Navprit Kur. And if I'm pronouncing your name incorrectly, I apologize. Navprit, Navprit, my apologies. I'll just ask one more time if Navprit Kur is here? Seeing no one, I'll go on to Sumit Kur. S U I M I T G O U R. Okay, next, Marilyn Cardinal. Come on, if you'd like to come to the table, please, you're more than welcome. Anything else to add? Okay, okay, perfect, thank you for that. Lily Beth Gilange, Gilange? Please come forward if you would like. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Maybe this, maybe I will get emotional, but.
It's understandable, take your time.
Thank you. Mayor Jackie Clayton, members of the council, city employees, my fellow residents, good afternoon. My name is Lily Beth Helia. I live and work in apartment 306 for Dennis Thorson as caregiver for 15 years. I never thought that I would be here in front of you speaking. But I'm here not just as a resident of this city, but I'm here as a survivor and a victim of the recent apartment fire that threw in my belongings. Those were not luxury items. Those were a basic of life. The clothing in my closets, the bed where I used to sleep, the furniture, and my home for a decade and a half. But even more than that, I am someone who has been displaced twice. And I wasn't seen as a tenant or as a person. Early morning of June 9 of this current year, the apartment where I live caught on fire. Most tenants managed to get out quickly, while me was still inside in the apartment, helping a handicapped person. But I get out, and my employer was rescued. It was very hard for someone who has health issues and mobility issues. He was transported to the hospital at emergency, and I was booked. They provide me housing in Pomeroy Hotel. That day, early morning of 6 o'clock, or even just before 6 o'clock. I was, the day after the fire, that was Tuesday, 8:40 a.m., Steve, who introduced himself as a chief, operated or administrative officer of the Grand Spirit Foundation, together with Jennifer and Ashley for the city and G-PREP. Steve gave us updates that the apartment is not safe to get in, and they are waiting for the fire department for instruction and so on and so forth. And that he encouraged us, he said, to find your place as soon as possible and let the foundation know when you found one. He further said that your accommodations for now is free on day-to-day basis. I find that message was disturbing for me. It creates or adds more anxiety and stress of not knowing what's next for tomorrow and the day ahead. After the meeting, Steve approached me. He asked me my name, my number, and the apartment where I'm in. So I provided all the details, and I left the hotel and I went to the hospital to look after for my patients. On June 12, 8:55 a.m., the same people conducted a meeting, almost the same message as the first meeting, that you have free breakfast, lunch, and dinner for free, however your accommodation is day-by-day basis. When the meeting was ended, Steve approached me, and he said, Lily Beth, you're not a tenant. And I told him, I live and work in that apartment for more than 15 years. He said, no, you're not. And he told me, Dennis has a place in Spirit River that is available for him. And I said, I will inform my employer about that, but I don't think that's the place he wants to go. Before noon of the same day, my neighbor called, phoned me, telling me to come back to the hotel before 3:30 p.m., because there is a registrations, because some tenants get one-week accommodations, some were two-weeks accommodations. I've seen Ashley on the side where they are working. I approached her, and I said, I want to register it. She said, you're not a tenant. You can go to Alberta Works in downtown, if you know where that is. She gave me that's in the Town Center Mall. I went to Town Center Mall, I was there and was thinking, this is not the place I want, because I just want something accommodation. I phoned the office of MLA, Nolan Deck. His secretary answered my phone, my call. I told her my case, and she told me, you go back to the hotel tonight. They cannot do that. Past 8 a.m., I went back to the hotel. I went straight to hotel room where I'm at. My belongings are not there anymore. So I went down to the lobby, and I approached the front desk. I told her I'm room 508, I'm looking for my belongings. And she said, it's here in the office. And I said, why it's there? Somebody from that area, that's work in that area, should check you out. And I said, who? She said, Ashley. I was tired at then. I phoned Dennis' son, if he can, if I could stay in his place. It was like I wanted to cry. I was thinking, what message does that send? That if you're brown, or black, or white, or you ask too many questions, or your name was not on the list of agreement, your life doesn't matter? That the city representative and the department that's supposed to help the victims and displaced people can remove your things and can check you out and can displace you twice without your knowledge and consent? Here's what I'm asking from you, council. I want the city to investigate and address the actions of your city employee, if she is. Check me out all that belongings and didn't give any informations that she will check me out on that day and give proper disciplinary actions. Like me, I don't have insurance. I have to remove my things, and I ask you to pay for it, if you can. Third, please ensure that the individual who caused the fire are held legally accountable and not just walk away without consequences. Because let me be clear, I did not start the fire. I did not cause it. But I have forced to bear emotional anxiety and stress and trauma for so many nights and financial consequences of someone negligence. And lastly, I want, let me allow to say this, I want to believe in this city. I want to believe that the people who elected to serve us will still have empathy and compassion and still have integrity and still have the power to act. Thank you.
Time, recognizing Councilor Blackmore.
I, I think that you have the sympathy and empathy of everyone in this room, as you've gone through a very distressful time. I am confused, though, about if you are not the tenant by, on the contract, who is the tenant?
My employer, his name is Dennis Robert Thorson, Robert Dennis Thorson.
And he lives in the, lived in the apartment with you?
Um, he lives there for 20 years. He's probably the first person who stayed there as a tenant. I came 2010 as a caregiver for him, so since then, I live in that apartment.
So where is he now?
I didn't include in my message, because I, I respect the privacy for his family. He passed away three weeks after the fire.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Councilor O'Connor.
Thank you, Ms. Gilange, for coming in and sharing your story. I take it if I understand the situation, you were a caregiver?
Yes.
Okay. And because of that, you weren't on the lease, but you lived there under his roof to assist him in, in his day-to-day living? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes. I'm just wondering if we shouldn't, or you could, find someone or a group to help you do a GoFundMe to be able to help you, but that's not going to solve all your issues. It's trying to get recognized that you were in the building caring for one of the residents, and that's a very sad situation. I'm not sure what to say to you.
Yeah.
My heart goes out to you. I feel empathy for you. So I wish you luck going forward, and if there's anything you can do to reach out to other groups and helpful groups, I think that would be a good step that you could take.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here today, and that's all of the questions.
Counselor, are you part of Grand Spirit Residential Society Board?
Councilor Deason.
Yes, I am, Lily Beth.
I'm just hoping that Steve, who is in the administrative, because he's the one who approached me, and he said that I'm not a tenant, hopefully he will know that more than me.
Definitely, I'll pass along, I'll pass along your story.
Because he seems like insulting, and it's inhumane for me to treat like that. And in fact, I told him, I stay there, and all my belongings are there.
I'm sorry that you had that experience with them. I will talk to Mr. Madano and let him know your story, and even turn him into this council meeting, so he can be aware. Maybe he'll reach out to you too, hopefully.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Next on today's agenda, under 6.9, the Regional Hospital Foundation. Delegation let us know they were coming ahead of time. I'll wait for Mr. Curtis to get situated. And take your time, Mr. Curtis, to address council. We may have questions for you following that.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor Clayton and counselors. So I am here in place of Chantal Dusse Chalafou, who was originally scheduled to present. Unfortunately, she has some rotary business that she's taking care of. So I was a last minute stand in. So I'm here to expand on the request for sponsorship for Festival of Trees as the youth sponsor for admissions. So starting last year, we did away with charging admission at the door and went to a sponsorship and a donation instead. We saw a great increase in the amount of people coming through our doors last year. Just over 5,600 extra people. So we thank you very much for your sponsorship last year. And just with the socio economic times and the socio economic divides that we do see within our city. My wife is a teacher and she felt that it was a great thing. She heard a lot more students talking about Festival of Trees and their experiences there because there was a lot of students that would not normally be able to attend due to the expense. But because of the generous support of our community in this council, they were able to attend Festival of Trees last year. So we are asking that the continuance of that for another year. It is continuing to be our desire not to charge fees at the door and leave it open to donations and sponsorship.
Perfect. Well, thanks for your presentation. I'm sure you're probably aware, the, the business that's arising through corporate sponsorship recommendation is actually next on our agenda. So I appreciate you being here in case council has any questions about the event per se, that maybe our administration, when presenting the corporate sponsorship, may not be able to answer. So I'll give council an opportunity in case you have questions for Mr. Curtis that are more sort of specific event questions that he would be well aware of. It appears council has no questions, so thank you for being here today. Really appreciate you taking your time. I do want to just acknowledge quickly, I understand, Mr. Curtis, that you are retiring. I just want to acknowledge the many, many years that you've provided to our community in many capacities. But in particular, the work that you've done with Grand Prairie Regional Hospital Foundation to continue to strive to provide incredible healthcare services for our region and for our facility. You have done exemplary work in fundraising and, and leading an organization that has served our community very well. So thank you for your time. I wish you all the best in your retirement and I hope to see you personally before you leave. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd love to see you. And hopefully I'll be back for Festival.
All right, moving to number seven on today's agenda, corporate sponsorship. As I indicated, 7.1, the corporate sponsorship, sponsorship recommendation. I'll give Ms. Billado an opportunity to get situated and then please feel free to present your report.
Okay. Good afternoon and thank you, Mayor Clayton. So I'm here to present administration's recommendation for corporate sponsorship of the 2025 Festival of Trees. And we are recommending that council approve the $10,000 sponsorship from the Corporate Sponsorship Fund for the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital Foundation as the youth admissions sponsor. So the youth admissions sponsorship ensures free entry for youth ages zero to seventeen and would provide the city with recognition both onsite at the event and across digital platforms. So this recommendation, it does align with Corporate Sponsorship Policy 129, which prioritizes established while supported events that enhance community life and align with council's strategic priorities. So for those that don't know, this event is in its 37th year. And as you've heard through Mr. Curtis's presentation, the Festival of Trees is a high impact event, drawing roughly twenty, sorry, 12,000 attendees annually and raising significant funds for regional healthcare. And if the sponsorship is approved, the remaining balance in the sponsorship fund for 2025 would be 2,750. Thank you. With that, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Perfect. Thanks for your presentation. Recognizing Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. One question and then ideally to do business, but there be other questions. So Ms. Billado, does this match what we did last year?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Counselor Blackmore. Did you have a question prior? Okay. Counselor Berg.
Hey, thanks, Mayor Clayton. And again, just echoing what Mayor Clayton said about Keith there, doing some great work in the community. Thank you very much. So with that, I am happy to move council direct administration to negotiate and then turn to a sponsorship agreement with the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital Foundation for the 2025 Festival of Trees, containing the terms and conditions satisfactory to the city manager and city solicitor and with the following specification. One, provide a cash sponsorship in the amount of $10,000 as the youth, zero to seventeen year old admissions sponsor to be funded from council's corporate sponsorship fund.
Thanks for that. That motion is in order. I will just say that I will support this motion. I think that the adding free opportunities for youth in our community is a huge step in the right direction. And as mentioned by Mr. Curtis, the more youth that get to knowledge, have knowledge of healthcare services and what the foundation does to provide equipment and, and support for extended healthcare in our community is extremely important. Having more youth integrated into that Festival Trees for knowledge and, and feeling comfortable around that event, I think is extremely important. So it's something council should be proud of, to be able to provide an opportunity for youth to attend free. So I will support this motion. And seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote.
Presssey in favor.
O'Connor in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Moving on to item number eight of today's agenda, our committee business. First item of business under eight, item 8.1, the Financial Services, Financial Administrative Services Committee Meeting, held August 19th. And I'll turn this one over to Counselor Berg for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move council adopt the minutes of the Financial and Administrative Services Committee Meeting, held August 19th, as presented.
Thanks for that, Counselor Berg. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question.
Presssey in favor.
O'Connor in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Counselor Berg, you had one item of business from your committee today?
I do. I would like to move council receive the unaudited financial statements and supporting information for the period ending June 30th, 2025, for information.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Opportunity for those who are in a committee to ask administration any questions. Report is, as other editions of this report, very self explanatory and very thorough. So I see no one in the queue?
Mayor Clayton, I'll jump in with one.
Okay. Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thank you. So I did ask a question at committee and Chief Whiteway did respond in an email, but just for public consumption, again, around our debt limit. Again, using rough numbers, that we are about 50% of what the city allows and 40% of what the province allows. So we've got plenty of room, just to confirm that.
Ms. Whiteway?
I think, Mayor Clayton, Counselor Berg's absolutely correct.
Okay. I just wanted that, that out there. So.
Thanks, Counselor Berg. And seeing no one else in the queue. Last call, everybody. I'll call the question. Please vote.
O'Connor in favor. I got dropped off the face of the earth here, so.
Don't be dramatic. Come on. And that carries unanimously. Moving on, or my apologies, Counselor Berg, any other highlights from your meeting?
Yep, just bringing it up now. Chief Whiteway updated us upon some financial management. Administration working with departments on July variance analysis and forecasting, while also continuing preparation and support for the 2026 budget. Selection process is underway for a new asset management system with vendor demonstrations planned for later this month. And the city did host a candidate information session focused on budgeting and financial reporting. I believe we had about 15 or 20 people out for that, so great turnout. Taxation and assessment. Administration is working on growth estimates. Some re inspections are wrapping up this week. Approximately 4,000 inspections were completed. And administration is reminding property owners with outstanding taxes, that outstanding tax balances, that a 6% penalty will be levied on September 1st. So get that paid up. Procurement and supply management following bids are still open. Supply of one tandem axle hydrovac truck, bulk highway salt, social media management, and aggregate crushing program. And under Geotech, administration reviewing the asset management system submissions. Development and deployment of 911 continues. And work is ongoing with Invest Grand Prairie to refresh and redesign the information dashboard. So those are a few highlights.
Thanks for that, Counselor Berg. Moving on to item 8.2, the Investment and Strategy Committee Meeting, held August 19th. And I'll turn this one over to Counselor Presssey for introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the August 19th Investments in Strategy Committee Meeting, as presented.
That motion is in order. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question.
Counselor O'Connor in favor.
And that carries unanimously. One item of business today, Counselor Presssey.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council approve amendments, Policy 206, Policy on the Arts. And just speak to this as things evolved over the last few years, how we approach decisions around public art and how we support the arts have evolved. If we approve this policy today, it won't actually mean any operational changes, but it will bring policy into how we're operating currently. So I would encourage council to support these amendments.
Thanks for that, Counselor Presssey. Seeing no one in the queue. Oh, I apologize. Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I really support the work we do to support art, particularly art in public places in the community. And I think that over the next couple of years, we may see that this policy gets expanded and reinforced with some additional ideas and developments. But in the meantime, I'm happy to support the changes.
Thanks for that. Counselor Blackmore. Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I too think that this is a great next step in advancing culture. And one area in particular, 5.1.2, in the area of community capacity, there's a recommendation to develop a renewed vision for arts and culture. And I'd love to see the next council really round that out.
Thanks for your comments. Seeing no one else in the queue, I will call the question. Please vote.
Counselor O'Connor in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Counselor Presssey, any highlights from your meeting?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. We had a presentation with Peace Library System, just giving some information on their budget in anticipation of budget liberations coming up in the fall. Council had the information needed to consider those. We had broadband analysis update and some of the work that administration's doing to make sure that our residents are adequately served by not just high speed, but also reliable internet. And one thing we heard about is there is going to be a project underway late this fall to ask residents and businesses to help us gather some speed data so that we can go to industry and talk about what speeds are actually being achieved in the city, which we really feel will be important work to encourage additional investment in broadband infrastructure here in town. And so I really hope that residents will pay attention for that and participate when they're given the option. We also talked a little bit about processes and communication methods for residents who want to get together with a bunch of neighbors and share that there's broad interest and council taking assertive action, but they don't want to go down the road of doing a formal petition under the Municipal Government Act. So that was an interesting conversation. And I also, actually, yeah, I think that covers the highlights of that meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Presssey. Moving on to item 8.3, the Operational Services Committee Meeting, held August 19th. I will turn this one over to Counselor O'Connor for introduction as Counselor Plott is not in attendance today.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move that council adopt the minutes of the Operational Services Committee Meeting, held August 19th, as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question.
Counselor O'Connor in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Moving on, Counselor O'Connor, under item 8.3.1, the subdivision authority officer appointment. I know Mr. Johnson is here if you had, would like him to introduce it. However, the motion is in the package. Up to you.
It's up to you. Mr. Johnson, did you?
Mr. Johnson, any comments from, from the report that's in the?
Nothing additional from what the report states.
Great. Thank you for that.
Thank you. I think Mr. C is in the office in, in council. Welcome. Thank you. I'd like to move council appoint Donald C as a subdivision authority officer to exercise subdivision powers, duties, and functions on behalf of the city.
Great. Thanks for that, Counselor O'Connor. Seeing no one in the queue with questions, I'll call the question. Please vote.
Counselor O'Connor in favor.
And then Counselor, sorry, my apologies, that carries unanimously. Any highlights from your meeting, Counselor O'Connor?
Yes, Mayor Clayton, there are quite a few items. I'll try and make it brief because it is in the Escrib online. Engineering and Transportation Services, RFQ, for aggregate crushing program has been posted. And there's been a number that have been closed, but there's been two of note that were not awarded. And that is the RFT for 103rd Street Construction in Trader Ridge. And the second one was Crystal Lake Tree Planting Project was not awarded and will be re-tendered in the next year, in the new year. And corporate facility management, the Reverend Forbes Homestead Rer roofing project is scheduled to begin next month. And environment part, most seasonal staff will finish next week. And thank you very much for your service to the city. And focused on the remaining staff will be in priority areas such as sport, sports field maintenance and the urban forest tree groves are being established along 116th Avenue and 100th Street with tree planting scheduled for next month. And the parquet at 100th Street and 100th has been removed and the team will work with the Downtown Association on option for the space. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Counselor O'Connor. Moving on to item 8.4, the Public and Protective Services Committee Meeting, held August 19th. I'll turn this one over to Counselor Teason for introduction.
Yeah, thank you very much, Your Worship. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services Committee Meeting, held August 19th, as presented.
Thanks for that, Counselor Teason. That motion is in order. I'll call the question. Please vote.
Counselor O'Connor in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Counselor Teason, one item of business today.
Yeah, you bet. It's a bit unusual because there are two, two parts to this, but I'll, I'll talk to that as well. For that, I would move that council receive this report for information on the Aging Well Together Priorities and Goals Update and direct administration to submit an application for the Age Friendly Alberta Recognition Award. Now, speaking to this, for any members of the public and all members of council, this is in our agenda package for today's council meeting. It was also in our committee meeting. But the Aging Well Together Initiative is making strong progress, progress towards building a more age friendly Grand Prairie through collaboration with community partners, senior citizens, 55 plus, meaningful advancements, and other things have been achieved in all of our priority areas from accessibility, mobility and connectivity, communication and technology, affordable living, social participation, recreation wellness, and community sports and health services. The ongoing work that this council and administration have done is our commitment to enhancing the quality of life and fostering an inclusive, caring community for members of all ages right up till, well, till we have to say goodbye in the cemetery and stuff like that, I guess. For that, for those reasons alone, it has qualified us for the availability to be able to apply for an award and, and hopefully achieve the recognition that everyone has worked so hard to garner here. So with that being said, I would encourage everyone to support this and we can file off the paperwork, pat ourselves on the back and continue to do great work for our 55 plus community. Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks for that, Counselor Teason. That motion is in order. I, sorry, and I apologize, are you doing them separately?
No, I'm doing them all as one.
Thank you. All right. Questions from council? Seeing none, call the question. Please vote.
Counselor O'Connor in favor.
Presssey in favor.
And that carries unanimously. Hopefully, we are successful in that submission and win an award for the great work that our team is doing. Counselor Teason, any highlights from your meeting?
Yeah, actually, it was quite a busy meeting of discussion and stuff. But I'll go right from the bottom to the top instead of the top to the bottom. Committee discussed vandalism recovery grant and perhaps starting a new pilot program. Committee discussed vandalism recovery grant and perhaps starting a new pilot program. One that we, we used to have something similar, but we're moving it forward with some funding options as well. And that'll be passed on to the next council to determine what the funding levels are and how those break out. But we did refer that to our 2026 budget deliberations. Also, we had a report on the contributions of midsize cities to family and community support services. This was a report that committee and council had asked administration to pull forward to see if maybe we're paying more than our fair share to family and community support services. The report did detail that we're of the higher ones, that we pay according to the 80/20 split. But we also recognize that the need up here is greater, and we are not alone as far as other midsize cities in contributing a little bit more. In fact, many of them contributed more than the 80/20 as it was factored. We talked about the Aging Well Together. We did receive a report on our 2025 East Link Center member survey, which is an excellent report that pretty much told us that all the improvements that we initiated over the past few years have borne their fruits in customer satisfaction. And right across the board, we saw a marked improvement from customer service to availability times to the offerings that we have there. And that report is still available in our Public and Protective Services Committee meeting. You could also draw it up online. And I encourage anyone who, anytime we put these surveys, that's how we get better, is when we recognize, you know, maybe there's some things we're missing, some new ideas from inside the community that can help us improve that. But so far, what was intimated to us, that all is good, the satisfaction with the center is growing, and we still have some places where we can improve. But that's what we're trying to do, is continuously improve. Finally, I just want to send out a reminder to everybody out there that this Friday, August 29th, is Grand Prairie's great celebration. Some call it the back-to-school celebration. We call it Experience GP, a free, family-friendly event for all ages are welcome, from age, well, as old as my son is, five months, to the 55-plus crowd, all the way up to 110 years old, if we have anybody that old in our community. Everyone is welcome. We'll have the Trues and other local amazing bands playing for that. And again, it is all free, right downtown. I encourage you to come down to the farmer's market and witness it for yourself. It will be a glorious time. And that is all I got, Mayor Clayton. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Teason. Appreciate the plug for that upcoming event. Moving on to item 8.5, Council Committee of the Whole held August 19th. And I just need Council Bressi. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council adopt the minutes, the Council Committee of the Whole meeting held August 19th as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote.
Councilor O'Connor in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Moving on to today's agenda, there are no items of correspondence. We will now move into delegation business. Council, as you see in your package, the delegations are in order as presented. I would ask that if you have any business that may be arising, that we do them progressively in order if possible, recognizing Council Blackmore.
I'd move that we accept the Masco Medical Center for information.
Thank you for that, Council Blackmore. Seeing no one else in the queue on that motion, I'll call the question. Please vote.
Councilor O'Connor in favor?
And that carries unanimous. Moving on to 10.2, the Bear Creek Village Condo Association, opportunity for council to ask questions for administration, recognizing Councilor Berg.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I do have two questions for administration. One, with that area back there that is, is not maintained, I guess, is that part of the naturalization program that we've, we've been running the last few years?
Chief Glavine?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. So that area in specifically is designated as environmental reserve. I believe it was as part of the naturalization discussion around three years ago. Picked up in that review that we should not have been mowing that area as it is environmental reserve, but the greater thing is looking at the agreement that was referenced by the condo is on title. So we do have in there that under section, I think, 4.5 of that agreement, that snow shall be not stockpiled within the development setback zone. So that's what was being referred to. And it all comes down to slope stability is generally speaking what that agreement is for. By mowing that area, you are potentially impairing the slope stability of that area by reducing the vegetation and then compacting the soils that would promote more runoff. I know that the fire department did take a look at that area, and Mr. Lemieux might be able to comment on that if that's something of concern.
Chief Lemieux?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just from the fire department's perspective, I want to say that that area, particularly the tree area, is on a list of fire smart vegetation cleanup. However, it is a lower priority than other areas. And the reason for that is the area has hydrant access, easy access for the fire department. So when we do the assessment of priorities, it is on the list, but it is not at the top of the priority list. So as we continue getting grant funding from FRIA, we will get to this particular area. However, the fire department sees it as a very defensible area should there be a fire in that area.
Okay, that, my second question is around trees. So I'm no slope expert, but history tells me that trees actually provide some of the best slope stability. Yet there's concerns around fires. So I think it's a matter of the lesser of two evils. So have we considered putting trees in there or is that just something that we're just leaving, letting nature take its course?
Chief Glavine?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. No, there hasn't been consideration for trees at this time. Some of that may naturally occur just by not mowing it, but it's certainly something we could look at.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that, Council Berg, recognizing Council Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I have a question, I think for Chief Lemieux. The fire smart standards for grass areas, can you remind me what that is, if they like grassed areas or don't like grassed areas?
Chief Lemieux?
I'd have to refer to the standard, and I will do that, and I'll share the information with council because off the top of my head, I forget what the exact standard states for grassed area, but I'll get that information to council.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that, Council Blackmore, recognizing Council Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So hearing that this was, hearing that this was stop mowing because it was part of the natural reserve, can, am I correct in assuming that this was stopped at the same time we did the Mission Heights Ravine just across 68th Avenue?
Chief Glavine?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I believe those timelines would line up.
Okay. And can you remind me, if I'm remembering correctly, we do now mow the Mission Heights Ravine thanks to direction of council, or have we left it unmowed?
Chief Glavine?
Yeah, thanks. I believe we mow a portion of the ravine.
Yeah, so if I'm remembering correctly, we stopped mowing the entire ravine, got community pushback, and then we still had concerns about some slope there. So we're mowing less than we were because we're not mowing the slope anymore, but we are mowing parts of it. Is, Mike, is your recollection the same as my recollection?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Clayton. Generally speaking, I think that is where we are today, but I would have to confirm that with parks.
Okay, thank you.
Recollection was we were mowing the part that was being used as a community recreational amenity and tobogganing, et cetera, but the rest was left to environmental naturalization. Recognizing Councilor Tool.
Thank you very much. Just a question regarding slope. Has there been any movement of the banks in this area that we are aware of?
Chief Glavine?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'd have to discuss with our engineering department if there's been any concerning movement in that area of late.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll be looking for any business that may be arising. Recognizing Council Bressi.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm, I think the motion I'm going to make is request that administration bring, bring more information about this to the appropriate standing committee, just speak that. We did have a couple of questions we just didn't have answers for. And I was pretty prepared when the delegation presented to make a motion, say, hey, let's start, let's start mowing it because we did that at Mission Heights. I get, I get the concern. I was pretty, I was pretty on board with that. But as soon as we start talking about slope stability, and I also do get the concerns about vegetation does help with slopes and compaction, and holy smokes, the last thing I want is to see those homes jeopardized by that slope. And so those are the unintended consequences, not for me, it's about saving a little bit of money to not mow or anything like that. But I really want to be careful that slope. So I think we'd be hasty to give direction today if we want to change it. But I'm certainly intrigued to hear more about this. And it is something, if we can find a way to take care of these resident concerns without jeopardizing that slope, I'd like to. But I don't have enough information right now to know that we wouldn't be making a bad decision. So my motion is to direct administration to bring further information to the appropriate standing committee.
Okay. And so I just want to be clear, because if you're expecting administration to bring back a slope stability report, it will, it will require some funding. So what specifically would you like to see in your report?
Yeah, and I think for me, two things that I heard, that I heard Mr. Glavine didn't have at his fingertips right now was, A, how are we, what was the decision we did at, we did Mission Heights? Because also I want to treat different residents fairly. But also, we did have conversation about, hey, have we had concerns with slope movement here recently? And what I heard was, don't recall hearing that, but don't actually know. And for me, it's a, I would love administration to be able to circle with engineering, have a quick conversation, and then come back to council. And there might be a, hey, we talked about it more and no concerns, we could mow it and we actually worry about it, or it could be, hey, it moved and this would be a really bad idea. But the idea is at committee, we can have a conversation of, do we want to ask to resources further once we can get full answers to the questions we asked today?
So Chief Glavine, based on that, it's, you know, looking for some additional context and information that you may not have at your fingertips tonight. If that requires additional funding, you'll, you'll bring that back as part of the report. Is that fair?
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and sorry, Council Blackmore reminded me, and also the fire smarting question was the other question that we didn't have at our fingertips today.
Perfect.
Great. And I'll also say that I am leaving it a little bit open in terms of, I did say, hey, bring a report back so that administration might come back in a, I want to leave latitude for administration to, they might say, hey, we want to come back in a week or three weeks to get further direction on what we want to do this, or maybe they do want to do a full-blown report. I really am intending to give administration flexibility on how they respond.
Okay. I think that both chiefs are clear, and I see a couple of other counselors in the queues. So before I call the question, I recognize Council Teason.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton, and thanks for the motion. Council Bressi, as our questions started going around, I still had questions on my list and actually joined in to be like, well, I don't, I think you might miss the fire smart, but Council Blackmore, she's usually stealing my questions. I guess you're stealing hers today. But I think this is, this is our due diligence, and we want to make sure that we're, we're serving and doing what's right here, not just for the residents, but to ensure that, hey, you know what, if we're, if we choose not to cut that grass, hopefully we have a really good reason and we have a way to defend it. I want to know how high that grass goes up to the property, and I just can't imagine it right now. So this gives us a bit of time to digest the information that's been shared today. And similar to Council Bressi, I'm not, I'm not in a rush to get it by next Tuesday. If it takes a little more time to bring it forward so that we hear what we need to hear to make a proper decision, I think that's right. So I encourage council to support this motion.
Thanks for that. Recognizing Council O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I also concur with Councilor Bressi. I think it's important, my memory says anyways, that this hill and this slope has slumped many, many years ago. Don't know the exact time, but it did slip in that area. And I think expecting that report, and then if it does require some fire smarting, then we should do that based on what the report comes back.
Thanks for your comments. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question.
Councilor O'Connor in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Next item, next delegation today was Ms. Robinson. I will provide an opportunity for council to ask administration questions and look for any business that may be arising. I will recognize Council Bressi first.
Great. Thank you. First of all, I just want to do a check-in with our city manager about process. It just seems like a funny request for council to even consider, not necessarily the city to consider, but for council to.
Mr. Berg?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would probably suggest, I don't have enough info to know if I would recommend this or not based on, based on the presentation. I think it would be worth us gathering some more information on, on what the initiative is, the script before we started. I think that's something that administration could do, and it could be within my purview to allocate those resources. So that is something if council wished us to gather some more information, at least at this stage, that that's something that, that we could do. And I think aligns with the delegation's timeline that this wasn't, this wasn't an urgent request. I do think this is within the city manager's purview to allocate those resources and would look at that. I would say at this point, I don't have enough information to know if I would or not, but we're happy to gather some more information.
Be business whenever you want it, but.
Seeing no one else in the queue, go for it.
I would just say, I would just make a motion that council refer this, refer decision on this matter to administration and just speak to that. Do, do really appreciate the frustration the delegation probably has in terms of coming here and being sent to us, and then we're sending it back to, back to administration. I know that we've got staff that are really responsible, but occasionally there's a bit of a, bit of a whoops. So do feel a bit bad for the delegation for that. But at the same time, I'm kind of glad the bit of a whoops happened because I don't know if we would have heard about this otherwise, that it is a cool initiative that whether we end up providing Firetruck or not, I'm very, I'm glad I heard about Elijah's story. It's a story that I'm not glad happened and, but it's good to hear about the good and the bad experiences we have in this community. And I, it's an initiative that I'd love to be able to support and know about as it does go forward. So glad we heard about it, but I don't know if it needs to come back to council.
Perfect. Thanks for that, Council Bressi. I see no one else in the queue. I will call the question. Please vote.
Councilor O'Connor in favor?
And that carries unanimously. The next delegations, 10-4, 10.5, 10.6, 10.7, 10.8. I'm happy for those to be addressed collectively, or if council chooses to separate them, please let me know. But I recognize Councilor Blackmore first.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. The first delegation, and I guess all of them, really asked four questions, so I'm going to just pose those questions to the city manager. They wanted to know the, the status of the fire investigation. They wanted to know if there is any available cost support for removal of property. They wanted to know about rebuilding and renting to the same tenants and if there will be repercussions for people who spoke out against some of the processes.
CAO Berg?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. And I, and I do appreciate that the residents are overall looking for some direction of where to go on this. And I would start with just saying that the best advice I can give is to work with the residential society. There's certainly some significant impacts here. And overall, this is a, is a tenant landlord insurance matter for them to resolve through there, but specifically to the four questions. Fire investigation, that's not something I would have information on. The, the process is, is independent through, through the different investigative forces, and it's not something that I would have information on or would, would comment on, would be, would be an investigation. The best information I have is that it's an ongoing investigation, and I would leave it at that. With regards to cost for removal, this, there isn't a program for the city to support this. This would be something for the society and tenants and the insurers to, to address. We don't, we don't have a program to address that. With regards to renting, the city doesn't have a role in, in administering the, the operations of this facility. And so that's something, again, working with the residential society would be my advice and repercussions. I do think that's something that, that if there were those issues raised, that's something that the city would, would look into, not because we have any legal mandate to, but I think that's something that we would, we would want to know about. But I don't expect that to happen. So that's the best information I have here today.
Council Blackmore. Seeing no one else in the queue, just look for some business arising. And even if we would receive the delegates' presentations, Council Teason?
Yeah, that's a hard one. And no one's really, no one's really reaching for the, for the buttons here, as our city manager just disclosed. A lot of this falls out of the city's purview, as far as us to be able to address things, especially within the investigation and stuff like that. I know all of our hearts go out to everybody impacted by the Margaret Edson Manor fire. And it's a really tragic and unfortunate series of events. But as far as answering these questions right now, the best we can do is send you back to the GP Residential Society, even Grand Spirit Foundation. We were just handling those contracts for them as a property management company. So a lot of that rests, rests with the landlord, which is the GP Residential Society. So I really, I know every one of us wants to, wants to help everyone that's been impacted here. But for the questions that have been posed here today, and what we're actually able to do, without getting in the middle of a fire investigation and insurance stuff, I think it's best that we just receive this for information now, which I know isn't going to make everybody here happy. I'm sure it doesn't make anybody sitting on this side of the table happy either. But I'm going to move that we receive this for information. Thank you.
So that, I'll recognize Counselor O'Connor.
Yeah, the, I agree with what, sorry, Counselor Thiessen has brought up. And the only suggestion I can make is, if the group could find out all the people that are in a financial need, perhaps some of our local charities or groups can come to their aid and, and help them. So if you could gather then all the people that are affected financially, maybe we can get the community behind you and, and help fund you through that way. And that's the only suggestion I would make.
The only other advice that I offer is, as recommended by some of my colleagues, please call your MLAs. Both MLA Weeb and MLA Dick will have additional contacts in regards to any financial services that may be available to you. And, and their, their contact information is on their websites. If you can't find it easily, please let us know. We can catch you in touch with our MLAs. And, and again, thank you for being here today. Empathize with what you're going through, and appreciate you taking your time to share your stories with us. With that, I will call the question.
Counselor O'Connor in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Moving on. So no notices and motion, we're not taking a recess. I apologize. What do you, Counselor Thiessen?
Yes, sorry, Mayor Clayton.
You are correct. One more item.
Just one more item. And it's a simple one. But I don't want Mr. Curtis' time spent here today wasted. So I would move that we receive the presentation from the Grand Prairie Regional Hospital Foundation for information.
Perfect. My apologies. I lumped it in my head that we had already dealt with it. But you are correct. So seeing no one else in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote.
Counselor O'Connor in favor?
And that carries unanimously. Okay, now I'm moving on, all right? Anybody? Okay. So no notices, a motion, no, we aren't taking a recess today. Therefore, I will go to council member reports and updates, and start with Counselor Bressi.
Well, thank you, Mayor Clayton. It felt like a long time away, but I don't know about the rest of council. It certainly wasn't summer vacation. It was just having more time to be at the many community events that happened. So I appreciated that. Of course, the highlight of my summer for community events, always the Bear Creek Folk Festival. And this year, I got to volunteer with my 13-year-old son. So we had a lot of fun, not just taking to the festival, but also getting to be a part of putting it on. And if people haven't volunteered for that festival in the past, I highly encourage it. It's a way to get into the shows for free, but also really great community around there that volunteers, volunteers as well. Some other fun, fun community events happened just this weekend. I got to go to Afro Times and to the Cricket Festival with, I saw most of you at those events. So those were great. I also got to attend the Canadian Association of Chiefs of Police Conference. And it was interesting hearing what's going on in policing across the, across the country, and how some international events are impacting local policing was the focus of this year's conference. And then finally, the Alberta Municipal Service Corporation, the Apex Pension Fund, and Alberta municipalities are all separate boards with different people on them. So every year, they each need to have their own strategic retreats. And I got to attend, so I got to attend three different strategic retreats for three different boards over the last, over the last couple of weeks. So really appreciated the conversations that I got to have at those, and especially on the Alberta Municipal Service Corporation Board. We've recently made a change there, where we've got less elected officials on it, and more experts from the outside business world on that board to help us find even better value for our members as we're growing programs there. And so really appreciated hearing from the new outside subject matter experts that are on that board, and really proud of the work that AMSC in particular is doing. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Counselor Bressi. I'm going to go to Counselor O'Connor now.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. It was quite a busy time in the last. So we went to a number of ribbon cutting, Smithy's Ribbon Cutting, and went Business After Five, Mixer and Sexsmith, and went to Heritage Days, and then to Captain Ken Cooper Retirement at the Fire Department. That was a very emotional time. It broke up his boss, for sure. And went to the SOS Memorial Dedication, which is Sound of Silence. Well, they, they used SOS as a Sounds of Silence type thing. Anyway, then went to the Ukrainian Unissued Diplomas, where over 100,000 Ukrainians lost their lives and weren't able to get a diploma. And that display is on right now at the Prairie Art Mall at unit number 41. And it's very moving, if you read the history of the people that didn't get their diplomas. Went to the, brought greetings on behalf of the city to the Roland Foundation Pact School Program. And it was very emotional to watch. They showed videos of where this all started in Africa, and to a number of the programs. And they give backpacks and supplies to kids from preschool to grade 12. Very inspiring. Went to the SOS Solidarity Over Silence. I had the wrong word. Okay. And, and then Hope Lives, 100 Families. A number of us went to that event. Mayor brought greetings. And went to the opening reception at Common Opulence at the art gallery. Right now, it's a very, very quirky, but interesting display at the art gallery. And I encourage anyone to, everyone to go to that. Went to the Hindu Association Flag Raising. And of course, Bear Creek Folk Fest was Walk Off the Face of the Earth, whatever they were called. Walk Off the Earth, I was close. Anyway, they were very, very good. And went to the opening of the Multi Sport Facility, and took in some of the other events. And then we went to Counselor Bressi and Thiessen, and, and us, served the physicians appreciation and staff appreciation event. And we fed a lot of people there. We actually ran out of food. And then, then we had the Ukrainian Independence Day and Flag Raising. They put on quite the event, a little bit more, but whatever. It was very well done. And lastly, I have a card here that was given to us for Bressi O'Toole Pla. Thiessen and I went, and they said, with thanks from all of us. And they show pictures of Kevin O'Toole, and myself, and Chris Thiessen. And they put some words in, "We, the Champion Adventure Campers, are really grateful for the time, care, and energy you give to us in the community. You made this summer awesome. We had fun trying new activities, learning new skills, and discovering what we can do when we try our best. Because of you, we grew stronger, braver, and more confident. And you made camp exciting. And we will always remember the lessons and fun we had together." So thank you very much.
Excellent. Counselor O'Connor. Counselor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. For our council break, I did home cleanup and home renovations for about two weeks. I've been neglecting for the past four on city council. So cleaned out my basement, my backyard, under the deck, and the garage, and filled up a dumpster. So I did a lot of that, but kicked back in full mode with Bear Creek. That was, again, a wonderful event. And just a little bit of feedback, one of my best friends from when I was about four years old to about eight, actually came into Grand Prairie for the Folk Fest from Edmonton. And him and his wife did the Calgary Folk Fest, the Edmonton Folk Fest, along with Bear Creek. And they actually said Bear Creek is their favorite, and they plan on coming back year after year at this point, just, just due to the intimacy and the quality of the band. So some great feedback there, and it was a great chance to catch up with an old friend. I did take in two art openings at the Art Gallery of Grand Prairie, Common Opulence. And I know Mayor Clayton got in there too. I wasn't sure, or sorry, Common Opulence, that one was essentially Peter Von Tezenhausen, who lives west of the city, nationally known artist, has a residency at his place, where a number of creative artists get to do a variety of things under Peter's tutelage. And going into the exhibition, we never know what it's going to look like, but it is, as Counselor O'Connor said, quite unique, and, and a little bit of exploration. And then another one, I wasn't sure what to expect. The poster just showed me some grass, and I thought, how is you going to build an art show around this? And I got in there, and it was absolutely amazing. Blew me away. Yep, Mayor Clayton was there. I know Counselor Bressi took some pictures too. The beadwork spectacular, basically, and they made lawn, a lawn out of green beads, and strings of beads. So there was that, but also beadwork in some bison, and a number of other things. So all of this is free at the Art Gallery of Grand Prairie. So a couple of amazing shows there. Did the dirt turning at the Multi Sport Sports Complex up on the north side in Trader Ridge. And I did, with permission of our Financial Administrative Services team, they did some programs for people that are interested in running for city council. And this one was on financial and administrative services. So I did attend as the chair of that committee. But also, I was a raw rookie when I went in four years ago to city council and jumped right into budget. So I just wanted to make myself available, should anybody have any questions on, on the side and viewpoint of a city council. So as I mentioned in the report, it was very well attended. I estimate about 12 people there were interested in running for city council. But I think we had probably 15 to 18 people there that were also supporting and just curious about how the city operates, and actually genuinely interested in, in the city's financial position. So it was, it was a good evening. And thanks to Chief Whiteley and her team for putting that on, as well as all of the chiefs in attendance. And this Saturday, again, very busy. I got there way early on Saturday, so I helped set up, but served burgers and gave out some tickets for swimming and some mini golf up until 3:00. And then when that wrapped up, went over to Afro Time and, and enjoyed some music over there and a nice snack, and then headed over to Cricket and attended there and watched a little bit. But more than anything, I think I was just visiting with some of the people there. My current family doctor was competing in that. And it's just something that I wasn't aware that he did. So it was, it was nice to see, you know, the human side, and also how they integrate into the community when they, a number of people do come here. And so it was just nice to have a personal conversation with my physician, and just get to know him a little bit more. So that's essentially my report, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks for that, Counselor Berg. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much. I was on a bit of a holiday there for a while. I took my wife to Vancouver Island. It's been 45 years since we've been married. And that's where we spent our first night in Sydney, as newlyweds. And then we moved down to the Empress Hotel for the rest of our honeymoon. But this time, we just went and did some sightseeing. On August 4, we did the Champion Gym Summer Camp, which was mentioned already. Ken Cooper Retirement, longtime employee and firefighter, went to his retirement party. On September 9, I was at the Soldiers of Suicide Ceremony and spent most of the day there. I had supper at the Veterans Memorial Gardens, as a bit of a fundraiser. They moved on during the day to Blueberry Mountain to do another ceremony up there. I stayed in town. On the 11, I acted as the city deputy mayor. And we attend, I attended the onboarding of a bunch of new employees, which we have a program for that, and spent a day educating them on what the city is all about. On the 13th to the 17th, I was at the Canadian Association of Police Governance. And there was some very, very good topics and discussions on the last day. And it was pretty interesting. I got up on Saturday morning, I went down to do the Alberta Health Services Staff Physician Volunteer and Family Barbecue in the park. I was a little early, so I went to the softball Cricket Festival, got there around 9:30, stayed there till about 11. Then I went back to the Alberta Health Services, cooked, no, I just handed out hot dogs and burgers. Didn't have to cook. It was good. And also, the Afro Time, I gave greetings on behalf of the mayor and council. In case you're wondering what Afro Time is, it's an African and Caribbean culture celebration. Lots of funky music gets in the going. They were doing aeropics at 8:00 in the morning, right? And I also attended earlier in the, before I took off, Sexsmith at the Green Elevators. They had a, an open house there and kind of get together. And the Smithy's Ribbon Cutting. And I also attended the Prairie Mall just the other day, and I come across the, the Unissued Diplomas for the Ukraine. And set up very nicely. Other than that, I spent time with the family.
Thanks for that, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Thiessen.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. My goodness. I think we had a break in between here, but it doesn't sound like anybody had a break, including myself. I attended most of the events that were, were already discussed. I will, do have a few more on my, on my list here that, that I attended and has not been mentioned yet. Of course, Heritage Days was mentioned, and I spent a good full day down in Musquesee Park enjoying that. And even about three hours before the day, being involved in the Second Annual Chariot Festival and Parade down the downtown streets of Grand Prairie, was joined by Councillors O'Toole, O'Connor, and Counselor Palat for that one. I think I lasted the longest. I got to Musquesee Corner, I turned around and ran for my car, because I was like, I got other things to do today. But it was really wonderful, a great, we were treated really, really well at that by our Hindu community. And the whole Heritage Days, I just kudos to all the organizers and participants, our city staff, who are helping with games in the, in the museum portion of the Heritage Days. Looked like there's lots of people that were having nothing but fun and enjoying their cultural experience. We had a meeting with the Grand Spirit Foundation. I know nobody was there, because I'm the appointed representative for council. It was a pretty simple meeting, because we had to have a special meeting. That was just because we're adding Smith Social Enterprises onto, onto our list of the associated groups, as well as clearing up some clerical errors as well. But as per our bylaws, we had to have a special meeting. So we decided to throw in a quick, a quick meeting as well. In that meeting, we got a bit of an update on the Smith Social lands, and how construction's going there, grants, et cetera. And pretty much were done before noon. It was a really, really quick meeting. The Hope 100 Grand Prairie Event, I have lots of high hopes for this. I know we've all talked about this before, but it was nice to be at their launch on August 14. Seeing all the community partners that are involved and engaged in looking to help connect people to the services that they need in order to thrive in this community and rise out of poverty. 100 families, to me, that represents 400 to 500 people who are rising out of poverty. And it's an ambitious goal. It's a heartfelt goal. It's a goal that's been achieved in other areas of North America. And like the mayor said at the event, when she was saying, in true Grand Prairie spirit, we are kicking it off for Canada. So I hope the Odyssey House and all their partners involved in this, and, you know, we can all smile together and be proud of the outcomes that the city of Grand Prairie can generate. I also attended the North 55 Community Pancake Breakfast, where I got to see Deputy Mayor Gladys Blackmore give greetings, and also Gladys Blackmore give greetings and also be part of the, the check donation from the Co-op Grocery Store for the Community Kitchen that they are doing there. So, $10,000 sponsorship from Co-op was really well received from the people there. Of course, I did the HHS Community BBQ. I have to, I have to say Counselor Berg and later O'Toole and myself, we actually served most of the burgers and hot dogs, Counselor O'Connor. Not bragging, but the lineups were longer before you got there. But it was a lot of fun and happy to be there in support of all of our healthcare professionals and stuff and any little thing we can do. I was just teasing you, Mike. Also got to take in the softball cricket championships, that was great. And then the last thing I'm just going to mention is something that I think is an incredible world-class event, you know? And for me, it was 11 days long for setup, for teardown, for eventing, and that's the Bear Creek Folk Music Festival. And, you know, that's the most time I've ever spent before, during, and after the event at the Bear Creek and helping to set it up. But I sure was happy to be able to provide my expertise in setting up festival showcases and stuff. And the volunteers there are just treated so well. One of the coolest things that I got is Grand Prairie's starting to get a bit of ownership over this. We know it's a world-class event and stuff, but what I was surprised by setup and teardown was how many city staff members have used their time off, their vacations, their weekends, and they donated as volunteers, taking ownership with the festival for our community to ensure that this event got off to a great start for the weekend and continues on with the glorious offerings that they give to our community. For me, I was one of 800 volunteers. We know that the city of Grand Prairie on average has about 850 workers every day making this city run and operate. Well, the Bear Creek Folk Festival is no different, but just over three days. So, I want to not only thank all the volunteers who put all their time and hard work and energy into it, the organizers such as Sarah Card and the people there, but our city staff who continuously go above and beyond to ensure that Grand Prairie is not only the greatest place to live, work, and raise a family in, but it's a place where we build magical memories for people and we have that sense of community pride and we're all in it together. So, to all our city staff, to the firefighters who had to watch me miss with a sledgehammer, pounding steak a couple times and get a good chuckle, it was such an honor to work with you all and I look forward to it again for years to come. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your update, Counselor Thiessen, and recognizing Counselor Blackmore.
I usually almost fall asleep during Counselor Thiessen's roundtable. It just goes on and on, even when everyone else has already said these things. But I will start my report with Heritage Days. I just wanted to really thank Charles and the staff at the museum. They have done such a good job of really bringing the Pioneer Village to life and making it very accessible. It was really crowded when I was there and it was just really great to see that many people, particularly people under the age of 20. It was well-attended and they deserve a, a very good pat on the back for that. I also met with a new physician who's meeting, who's moving to Grand Prairie. Dr. Ammu is an OB-GYN who will be starting work October 1st. He's moving here from Blackpool, but his family originally comes from Nigeria. When he told people in Blackpool that he was moving his family to Canada, they said, "Oh, you won't be back. No one comes back from Canada." That was a really interesting thing. And one of the reasons he's coming is he does have a special needs child and his special needs child in, in Blackpool had spent two years working in Toronto. And she told him that Canada has the best education process for people who are special needs and the way we integrate them into our schools. So, that's really one of the main reasons his family's chosen to move here. So, it's always good to hear what's great in Grand Prairie from people who are not from Grand Prairie yet. I attended the Hope Grand Prairie 100 launch and although the, the kind of push is to bring 100 families out of poverty, the really interesting thing for me about that is, having worked in, in nonprofits in, with people with mental health issues, it's always difficult to try and navigate the FOIP issues around having a client accessing services from several different service points. And so, the Hope Grand Prairie 100 process is, they use an app where everyone who services that client can add information into the app and the client doesn't have an identifying name so that he or she is kept, his privacy is maintained. And that's a really interesting thing for me because that was always a struggle in the field of mental health of how to share information respectfully. I brought greetings to rename the kitchen at 55 North Community Center. That will be the Co-op Community Kitchen. That was the pancake breakfast. And in addition to thanking the Co-op for their generous donation, we should also recognize Home Depot who did quite a bit of renovation in the kitchen space at their cost. That was their contribution. And the kitchen is really very, very nice. My favorite part of Bear Creek Folk Festival was, in fact, the Sunday night wrap-up. I really did enjoy the three bands that closed the festival. Every year that we attend, and we have attended every year, we meet people who come here from pretty far away. So, this year we met three people who'd driven here from the east side of Saskatoon. They've come every year since 2017 and it's the only festival they come to now. They don't attend any of the other larger ones because they just find Grand Prairie so comfortable and they love it here so much. And it kind of tells me that maybe it's not the best time to try and expand the festival, but rather to make it as good as it can be in the land it is currently based in. But that's just my opinion. I attended the multiplex groundbreaking and I had a South East Regional Archives Board meeting. I have some notes from that. The archivist at the Archives, Jack Lawrence, resigned in early June and went to another position in Winnipeg. And our junior archivist, which is Alyssa House, also left in June to come to work for the city. So, the Archives was quite shorthanded over the summer and they did close a couple of times from being short-staffed, but those were not very long periods, total of about 10 days. They have hired a new archivist, who's Luke Harrison. He starts September the 2nd and they're really excited to have him join the team. They had five extremely strong applicants for archivists to take that position, so five different archivists from across Canada, and settled on Luke. And he, I think, comes from Saskatoon, but I'm not sure about that. And I know that the archivist staff, archival staff will be meeting with our Legislative Services staff in the very near future as they are seeking the records in the city of Grand Prairie that are prior to 1958 to be moved from City Hall to be stored at the Archives. And I really hope that we, we go ahead with that as they have significantly better processes in place for storage of historical documents than we do at City Hall. And the final thing I did was I did, did attend physician's appreciation. I did hand out mini golf and swimming tickets. And then I went over to the African Party and I did not make it to the cricket event. And that concludes my report. I hope it was as long as Counselor Thiessen's. I tried hard.
What was more interesting to me is how many times you said "archivists," and I also didn't know that there was such an abundance of archivists available to hire. So, I, I really learnt something from your roundtable.
And there's not an abundance.
They're just so excited to move to Grand Prairie.
Apparently.
Also great news.
Yeah, they're graduating out of programs, so that's partly it, but yeah.
Anyways, everyone, thanks for the report. I will take as much time as I want to because I am allowed to, but no, I'm just joking. I will go quickly so we can all get home for the evening. I had the opportunity with our CAO and others to meet with the CFO and CIO of Mustard Seed to get an update on the work that they're doing, not only in our city, but across the province and, and the other provinces that they serve, communities. Also had the opportunity with our CEO to meet with the Bissell Center, who updated us on some of the workforce development that they do in Edmonton and as they are exploring other regions. It was a great conversation. As mentioned by Counselor Berg, attended the Grand Prairie Art Gallery Common Opulence and, and was really impressed by what a, a cool initiative in that artisan residence and, and how they make things like pots from the soil, literally in the ground. And so, everything in that room is from that region and it, it really tells a great story. And, and I encourage, as Counselor Berg did, for people to check out the beadwork. The artist's first name is Carrie and I can't remember her second name currently, but it's, it's a great exhibit. Attended, as my colleagues did, the Bear Creek Folk Fest. And really just as Counselor Thiessen mentioned, want to thank the hundreds and hundreds of volunteers. Our community continues to stand up when required, whether it's cultural events or sporting events, whatever it is, we truly support. Great events and great opportunities which help build our community and make something that we should all be very proud of. I attended, as mentioned, and spoke at the Hope Grand Prairie Launch and, and really just proud, once again, Grand Prairie leading the way in an initiative that will serve many and support many organizations as a, as a, as a one-stop counterpoint for information and look forward to the work that the Odyssey House is doing in leading that initiative. I had the honor to represent council in the Pakistan Independence Day Flag Raising, followed the next day by the India Independence Day Flag Raising. Thanks to the organizations, our community groups that lead those initiatives and really bring awareness and education and of what's happening in our community with their organizations and really creating a more, an inclusive but knowledgeable community. I think that, I wanted to thank, before I forget, those who supported some of my duties, in particular Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Pallott and Deputy Mayor O'Toole. I know others pulled up, pulled, pulled their weight when required as I was away in BC visiting family, had an opportunity to get a break. And so, I thank my council colleagues for their support in that. I had the pleasure of turning the sod, the ground, let's call it, the groundbreaking of the Multi-Sport Dome in the north area, north region of Grand Prairie. It's something that not only will serve our community, it's something that I think we should be proud of as we continue to celebrate and recognize the great relationship that we have with our municipal colleagues. The, the support of the county of Grand Prairie in this project makes it even more of a project that I'm proud that this council got behind. And so, I thank our colleagues in that work. Had a meeting with the president and chair of the Board of Governors of Northwest Polytech and had an update on the skills trade work that they're doing in the demand in the region. And as council has identified Northwest Polytech skilled trades expansion in Grand Prairie as a priority, I will encourage council and we will get more of an update shortly. But to keep it at the forefront of your mind that a trades expansion in Grand Prairie is the number one catalyst for success when it comes to industry's needs. And so, Northwest Polytech, as they continue to work with the industry and identify what is really required for our region to be successful in many sectors, the work that Northwest Polytech is doing is extremely important and that trades expansion right here in the city of Grand Prairie is a priority. I, speaking of municipal colleagues, had the opportunity to attend the Prairie's Can Announcement, Minister Olszewski's announcement to support the Work Northwest Initiative. I attended that in Edmonton very briefly with Reeve Marshall and Reeve Olson, where we also had the opportunity to invite the minister up. And I understand that is in the works. She was very pleased to be able to come to our region and learn more about our region, so I look forward to that as she is located in Edmonton and, and primarily responsible for emergency services, but also responsible for Prairie's Can. So, it would be great to get her to the region. I attended the Grand Prairie Chamber of Commerce Golf Scramble and I actually golfed decently that day, so it was kind of nice, but it was a 35-kilometer wind day, so I will blame it on the wind for decent, the decent golf I had that day. But thank you to the chamber for the work that they continue to do to lobby on behalf of business in our region and with the province. I attended, like my colleagues, briefly the Afro Time Event and, and I had an email conversation with the organizer of that event today to thank them for the work that they're doing to, it's organizations such as Afro Fest and the Cricket Association that really are creating these fun pockets of opportunity in our community where you get to meet people that you may never have met or experienced and watch a sport that you may never have watched. And it's pieces like that where we're just strengthening our community and, and really what it does for including people, but also for being resilient because we are getting to learn more about each other. So, thank you to those organizations. Thank you to the Cricket Association for making each of my council colleagues very unique cricket uniform shirts. They were very, very fun and unique, but they were a representation of each of the teams that were competing in that tournament. I also stopped by very briefly the HHS Appreciation Event. So, thanks to the Invest GP team, thanks to my colleagues, thanks to HHS for putting together a huge event to appreciate the healthcare professionals in our, in our region. They are essential to our success, but they really take great pride in, in living in Grand Prairie and it's always great to hear that. I, as mentioned, brought greetings and raised the flag at the 34th anniversary of the independence of Ukraine. So, if you put that in perspective, Ukraine has only been independent since 1991, which really isn't that long ago. And so, that organization continues to do integration into our community to teach more about their ways and the importance of their independence. So, thank you to that organization. And last but not least, I attended yesterday at the Montrose Cultural Center, an event put on by the Grand Prairie Public Library called Fables in Ferries. It was an opportunity for tons of little kids running around in ferries and knits and dragon costumes and an opportunity for learning some of the services of the Grand Prairie Public Library. There was food trucks, there was, the bandaged paw group was there. There was some really funky, cute wares available in, in different booths that were there. And it was the first-time event and they had an incredible turnout, so kudos to the Grand Prairie Public Library for that first-time initiative and such a great success with the turnout that they had. I said that was the last thing, but I have one more thing. As Counselor Thiessen mentioned earlier, this weekend, Friday night, Experience GP in front of the farmer's market. Huge event, all free, all ages. Looking forward to it and hope to see you all there and enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you.